We shot his last.
Oh, did I?
Down here.
He took a one-square-foot area. You and he called us up to help.
Yeah. That's right. You have 200 ticks on one square foot.
Oh, yes. This should say like, this is a library.
My density, global population.
Hello.
It's like anything. It'll be dense areas that'll be like moose. Just like the deer. It seems like the density of this is where you have more ticks. I think he finds that's like people that feed tend to have more ticks than others.
Hi, Ray. Long time no see.
Hey, Ray.
Oh, yeah. I just don't. I don't, I don't.
Am I carrying? Conflict.
No, we're gonna have to go, because Bill Paul this goes under Old Business because we've already voted. So we'll have to do the.
Have you talked with him already?
Oh, no, we do Old Business first. So that's right. So, yeah, there's nothing else about it. So just, um.
What's that?
That will be this.
That's all?
Whether it actually gets reconsidered or not is going to be. Because I didn't, we didn't know if it was put on the agenda because.
That's everything we needed.
Under New Business, it's always an order, a reservation, or whatever it is.
Well, because voting's here the next day.
Oh. So, yeah, I called Bill this morning and said, how do we put this on the agenda to make it the right way? Okay. And that's what he told me to do.
Paul's gonna come in on time if I'm playing first.
Chad, did I not do a Zoom link? I thought I did. I did?
Yeah. If there wasn't much return, we were gonna redo it. Hope any issue would.
How come I got the crack?
Well, Bill.
If you're wanting, you don't deserve this.
Hi, Bill. You gonna sit with us?
Well, I've been invited and.
You don't, you don't need any. That's your seat. That's your seat. Fudge of allegiance, please. Fudge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, Ropolo, Dale Macklin.
Yeah.
Jerry Quarian.
Yeah.
Ray Karen.
Yeah.
Joseph Gravel.
Yeah.
Jeff West.
Here.
Lee Trahan.
Here.
And Peter Drappel.
Here.
Uh, we have no approval of minutes, um, this evening. Do we have any communication?
I have no, um, email comment.
Um, no reports of committees, um, and then no tabled business, so, uh, old.
Public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, public comment.
At this time, anybody that'd like to get up and speak on something that is not on the agenda can do so. There being none? Stand by?
Sorry.
Thank you.
So is none? Okay, now we're on to Old Business, um, order number 20 dash 2023, possible reconsideration of vote to award contract to Pike Industries.
A point of order before we move our, uh, second down. It was my understanding that the way this was going to go down, or it's be discussed in the order, was that first, we were going to discuss whether Peter Drappel has a conflict of interest.
You are. That's how this is going. This is the order it has to go on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanna make sure. And then, once we have that discussion, the council will take a vote. And depending on how that vote comes out, depends on the next steps forward.
Yes.
Okay.
But this is how it has to appear on the agenda, so. Do you, am I?
I'll move, move the, the order.
Second. Discussion.
So the discussion at this point is for you, as the counselor in question, to discuss what has been raised as a potential conflict. And just tell what your relationship is with the contractor in question and how you see the situation.
The way, the way I make my living now is I subcontract to Pike Industries as one of the contractors. Uh, I have subcontracted everybody that was on this bid list. I have subcontracted to everybody Paul hires and Public Works. The way it works with Pike is I negotiate a contract every February to get paid a certain fee to move their product. Uh, within the zone that I am assigned to. That zone is anywhere from Poland to Herman and all the plants and quarries in between. I see no benefit. I see no extra monetary value to any community I work for, any state, any community Pike works for, any state entity, any federal entity. Before I decided to run for council, I checked with my attorneys, being pretty flirty, explained this all to them because this was a concern of mine before I ran for council. They assured me that there would be no conflict, whereas I didn't work for any of these companies as an employee, nor did I hold any holdings 10% or above in ownership. I have purposely, in the past two years as council, Pike has gotten the contract, and I have purposely asked Dispatch to leave me off these jobs. To try to eliminate some of this talk. Apparently, it has come out. I don't feel I have a conflict. I have lived here and been in business here since 1983. Rocky can attest, Bill Lee can, a lot of people in this community can attest to the amount of money and the amount of good I have done to this community. I bought the first defibrillator the fire department ever owned, out of pocket. Recently, I just paid and built a key ark for the World War I Veterans Memorial and Memorial Park. The, the list is endless. I do not have to worry, nor would I, about gaining any extra revenue from working for the town of Winslow. I do this as my civic duty, and I do this to try to get this town squared away. I've been accused of beating a dead horse, but for 15 years, this town did not move forward one step. And we are moving it forward, and apparently that really irritates certain people. I have nothing else to say. I'm a bit, I wouldn't say offended, but I could say ticked off in being accused of having a conflict and, quote, lining my pockets in behalf of the town. None of these people that said this, or I should say printed this on Facebook are here in the audience tonight. I have extended all invitations. Anybody wants to talk to me about anything, whether it's town business, private business, the color of the sky. I'm at my facility from 5:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. every day, 7 days a week. Anybody can come in and visit and talk. But no, we have keyboard heroes that, that choose Facebook as a means of communication. I'm from the old school. If I wanna talk to Paul, I go see Paul, I look him in the eye. If I wanna talk to Mike, I go to Mike and look him in the eye. You and I have done business. Have we ever done it over the phone? No. I can look somebody in their face and tell within 30 seconds whether they're telling the truth or not, or they're sincere, but they're honest. I expect the same. That being said, that's my relationship with the town and with Pike Industries. I don't feel I have a conflict. More discussion?
I just explain the procedure, if I may.
Sure.
Uh, under Rule 25 of the council's rules and procedures, which has been adopted by, as an ordinance, if a counselor feels there's a question of a conflict, possible conflict, the counselor brings the matter up, explains the situation from the counselor's perspective. Other counselors then have the opportunity, if they wish to ask that counselor questions. And when the discussion is over, council may take, take a vote. You could move to say, uh, based on the circumstances, you feel there's a conflict of interest and, and that counselor should recuse himself. Or you actually could flip it around and say, based on what I've heard, I don't feel there is a conflict, so I, um, I, I move that we find there's no conflict, conflict of interest here. You could do it either way. That motion is seconded. It's up to discussion, and the counselors, not, other than the affected counselor, vote on the matter. That's how your rules of procedure define it to be done, and that's a generally accepted, commonly way of, of doing this. And so, what Mr. Drappel has done is stated his working relationship with different entities here. It's now open to counselors to ask any questions that they may have.
I have a question for you, Bill.
Oh.
As our town attorney, is there a conflict?
Can I just interrupt you? My understanding, Bill, you had a meeting with Peter last week sometime, and you discussed Peter's situation with you.
Yeah, he, he wanted to know how to proceed in this matter because he's.
You probably got all the information you needed from Peter to be able to make, to inform this council of what your decision would be.
Well, it's not, it's not a, it's not my decision. Under the rules, it's your decision.
Your opinion.
Okay. There is not a, a statutory conflict here because he's not an employee of the entity, and he does not have a 10% ownership interest in the matter. Okay? So from a purely legal standpoint, there's not a conflict. Depending on what the facts are, you have an act, for example, if you asked a bunch of questions of him and you thought, gee, because of something that, that puts you, makes him a little too close to it, you could decide, yes, uh, we think in this, it would be better for all appearances that you stay out of this, Mr. Drappel. But from a, you know, from the statutory conflict definition, it, that does not exist here.
Thank you.
Because he's not an employee, he does not have a 10% ownership interest in the entity that was awarded the conflict. But you can, this is, and this is sort of, I, I view this as a, I'm gonna talk, Peter and I talked about this, that these questions come up, um, and we're gonna, and you suggested creating a procedure going forward so that at the beginning of any council meeting, counselors will be asked, is there any matter of business before the council here tonight for which somebody might think you have a conflict of interest? And that gives counselors the opportunity to say, well, gee, you know, my second cousin is, uh, in on this contract. I don't think it's a problem, but I'm disclosing it. If other counselors have any issue with it, let's speak up and decide it right now. And that way, you don't have things coming up after the fact. It's just brought up right in the beginning because you, you're dealing with both the actual conflict and sometimes you have things that create the appearance of a conflict. And having an open discussion of these matters right up front at the beginning really goes, I think, a long way toward eliminating what otherwise people might see as sort of the appearance of a conflict. So, at this point, I've answered, the answer to your question, it's not a statutory conflict, but the council has the opportunity to ask questions. If it asks questions of Mr. Drappel regarding his business relationship or lack of relationship with Pike Industries, right? So.
Yeah, I have some things I'd like to say. There's nobody on this council, I don't think, that knows what Peter Drappel's been doing for work for the last however many years. We all know exactly, pretty much, what he's had for a job, uh, with Pike. Nobody brought this up last meeting. Nobody. And we all know what his job was. Why bringing it up now is because one member of the public complained that Peter may have a conflict of interest, and that's what set this whole thing off. Uh, there may be a lot of stuff on social media about Peter's job. That's social media. We only had one, as far as I know, official complaint for the town website. That was it. And to call this meeting, special council meeting, for one complaint, if we set this precedent, what's gonna happen tomorrow after tonight? Somebody gonna complain tomorrow? Bill, your situation, I, I basically agree with it, but next meeting, we go around the table, no counselor says they have a conflict of interest. The next morning, somebody from the public can complain. Are we back where we are today? Who knows if that's gonna happen or not? I don't know. But for one member of the public to stir this all up, and that's all they're doing on social media, I don't take social media as being anything official that we have to consider at a council meeting. If they wanna do it through pound emails, fine, we'll consider that. But I think we, as a council, have to be awful careful on what kinda, what's this gonna open up going forward when one single member of the public is gonna complain about a decision we made. Now getting to Peter's conflict of interest, we all know exactly what he's been doing. And we did not raise the issue last week at our meeting. And it's my opinion, and I've talked to Peter a lot about this since before I was even on the council. Two other contracts in the past, he's voted on Pike. Did ever come up then? Never came up. But it comes up now. I've had a lot of background in conflict of interest areas, and it's always been my advice to Peter that this was not a conflict of interest when you know what a subcontractor is. And I think most of us in this room do on this council. So I'm gonna go forward with this, and I'm gonna vote that there is no conflict of interest on behalf of Peter Drappel.
You making a motion?
Uh, further discussion?
I make a motion, will we end discussion?
Second. That takes the council vote on it.
Are you talking, was that a motion to end discussion?
End discussion.
Okay, you can move second, and then the council has to vote to end discussion.
Yeah, you have to vote on ending discussion.
Sometimes that takes more time than just going straight to the.
I don't care. Just, let's just get it. There's a motion on the table, seconded to end discussion.
That's it.
Audrey?
Well, that's a two-thirds vote.
That, that takes a two-thirds vote.
That takes a two-thirds.
But there's no discussion on that motion.
Right. That is correct.
Okay. Um, so Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Jerry Quarian?
No.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Peter Drappel?
Do I vote on this? No. Sustained.
Right. So that ends discussion.
Okay.
And now the matter is open for a motion.
I make a motion, I do not see any conflict of interest here.
Second.
You say you're moving that there is no conflict of.
Correct.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so a motion that there is no conflict.
Is there an opportunity for public comment here?
It's up to the council.
Technically, before this vote, final vote, they have the right at public participation.
You already had the final vote. You've already waived second reading.
No, I'm, I think he's talking about the vote, the final vote to whether Peter has a conflict or not. Then that's open to public comment for three minutes.
It's up to the chair. It's up to the chair to decide whether they wanna have public comment. If you wanna have public comment, you can, you can reopen public comment for people that want to.
I have no, I have no problem with that. Let's, let's air everything out tonight. Go ahead, Mr. Loubier. Please state your name.
My name is Mike Loubier, lifelong resident of Winslow, and currently live on the Agaster Road. Uh, in the matter versus regarding your conflict of interest, I totally support that there is no conflict of interest. I know by the traffic of your trucks going by my house that you're gonna work whether this town give Pike the job or not. I also traveled in the paper industry for 35 years and have seen your trucks here in Rumford Route 2, Route 4, Route 201, et cetera, et cetera. So I clearly believe there's no conflict of interest. On the matter of this council, I commend you all for some of the hard choices that you had to make this year to move this town forward. And I understand the pressure the previous councils were under to not raise taxes, and, you know, when you look at the cost of living over the last 15 years, we probably should have had some incremental tax increases so that we wouldn't have a large increase like we might have this year. So I commend you guys for making the hard decisions and support you 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Would anybody else from the audience like to get up and speak? There being none?
Uh, Dale Macklin?
Can you repeat them?
A motion that there is no conflict.
No. Wait, wait a minute, wait a minute.
There is no conflict would be yes.
Yes.
So voting in the affirmative would be in support of no conflict.
There is no conflict. Yes, there is no conflict.
Man, I don't wanna tell you how to vote. After that speech, I'd be very surprised.
Thank you, Ray.
Jerry Quarian?
So if I vote yes, I don't know, but I'm not voting right now. Is that a, there is a conflict?
No. Yes is that there is no conflict. No would be that you believe there is a conflict.
Well, it's no.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
And Pete, oh.
I can't vote.
Sorry. Have it to you right down the line.
Oh, we'll be back here next Monday a few more. So don't do that to us, okay?
Five to one, it passes.
I apologize to the council for this. I guarantee, going forward, every meeting will be opened with the question that Bill has suggested that I ask. And he explained to me, I, I called Bill this week to get this clarified along with my attorneys. Uh, we're gonna do as, as we're, we're suggested to do.
Probably avoid confusion. The next time the matter comes up for a vote, we might reverse the, the order of the questions so you don't have to say yes when you mean no and no when you mean yes.
Well, Bill, that would be helpful.
Well, they say it's up to you all, however you wanna phrase it. You can do it either way. You just have to make sure you know that, depending on how you do it, yes might mean no and no might mean yes. So that's the way some of those referendum matters are worded, if you will.
It's very difficult in a small town not to know somebody to do business with somebody that comes before the council with, with things. So you're always better to clarify the situation prior to, prior to if you do feel you have a conflict for any of the counselors. It's always good to talk to Erica or the chair or Bill to get clarification on that.
And you might have a matter where you really do feel there is a conflict, so you just speak up and just say, look, for such and such a reason, I really feel I should abstain. Does anybody have a problem with that? And presumably, if you felt strongly about a matter like that, nobody's gonna disagree with you because you yourself are saying you have a conflict. But anyway, you have a rule of procedure that covers it. You followed that here tonight. Uh, with a determination of no conflict, then there's no reason to reconsider the vote that took place last week because the vote stands.
So there's no votes on this tonight?
Right.
Okay.
That's it.
So there's, the original vote on the paving contract stands. It will not be reconsidered.
Right.
Okay, uh, under New Business, we have a resolution, Resolution Number 9, 2023, providing for authorization for the town clerk, registrar of voters to notify the voters of this municipality of a budget validation referendum election for the Winslow Public School to be held on June, held Tuesday, June 13th, 2023.
Tom will second. Discussion. No discussion?
Okay. Um, Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Jerry Quarian?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
And that will be held, uh, here in this, in the library this year.
The collection?
Collection. For discussion, the Dixon sewer issue.
So Paul and I are kinda together on this one, bringing this issue up. We had a sewer backup in April, um, that was in the main line. We filed, uh, with MMA for insurance, um, feeling that since it's in the main line, it is an issue for the town to resolve. Um, we have been denied on the insurance claim. We did pay the bill to have the cleanup done, but there is an additional bill, um, to have the actual repairs done based on this, um, based on what was damaged and had to be removed, carpeting, drywall, et cetera, uh, with the sewer backup. Um, I did, I appealed the decision by the MMA, um, and I did talk to, uh, the lady in charge over there who told me she would not be reversing the decision of her adjusters. Uh, reason being that by the letter of the law, the town is not liable because we have been performing regular maintenance on the line. We had jetted the line approximately 10 months prior to this issue happening, and, um, sometimes things happen, and it's not really anybody's fault. So they feel that it is not on the town's insurance, but should be on the individual's homeowner's insurance. Uh, problem being, a lot of people don't have coverage for this type of issue. So the cleanup bill was approximately $6,000, a little over. The bill that we have now for the repairs is $17,000, which, the reason I wanted it brought before council discussion, I do have a spending authority of up to $20,000, but because the entire bill, when you add together both the cleanup and the repairs, is over 20, I felt it best for council to weigh in on this. Um, I'll let Paul speak to what maintenance was done and why he believes that it's on us to do something about it.
Susan, chair. How many homes were involved?
One.
Maybe half of another one that we had a little bit somewhere else, and we never got a claim, so. But this one, this one was substantial, so. And we had routed the line last year, but we'd never camered it, so apparently we went through the root ball, made a whole flow continue till this spring, and then we plugged back up. This time, we did run the camera through it and a nice big root ball, which, in my mind, was our problem, not hers. So she, you know, she received quite a bit of damage, quite a bit of cleanup, so partially finished cellar, so, I mean, they pulled out carpeting, dug, cut the wall and the drywall, pulled out furniture, everything that had been contaminated, so. I agree with Erica. I mean, I think it's on us, but our insurance is saying just, I mean, they basically said if we open covers once a year and make sure the flow's going, we've done due diligence. Gives them a right to deny the claim, which I disagree with, but I'm more conscientious than that. I think it was on us. It's up to us to move for us. It's not the homeowner's fault. She's innocent bystander, so.
The homeowner, correct me if I'm wrong, but they pay a fee to get rid of the shortage. Therefore, if it's.
The statute got more, she paid for it.
Yeah, if it's, if it's downstream, it's our fault. That all being said, what happens if the neighbor flushes a diaper down the toilet and it plugs? Floods another home? That's still our issue, but the insurance wouldn't pay for that either. Why, why do we have such a half-assed insurance company?
Well, according to, I, I don't think you're gonna find that anybody else is gonna cover it either because insurance companies are very good at not paying claims. That's a big part of their business.
That's when you go to commission.
But the, the reasoning that was given to me, that, she said, prior to, a few years ago, MMA was paying a lot of sewer backup claims for the town of Winslow because we did not have a regular maintenance plan in place. Therefore, we could not say that we were regularly examining the lines, cleaning the lines, and that fell under our due diligence that we were not completing, and therefore those claims were paid. However, we have done a much better job in recent years of catching up with creating a planned maintenance program, making sure that we're hitting these approximately once a year or so. And therefore, because we jetted it, she didn't tell me it was because we just opened the manhole and saw the waters running. She said we actually, we physically cleaned it with the jetting, uh, and therefore we've done what we could on our end. And although it's not the homeowner's fault, it's also not something that the town necessarily could have prevented. Um, I, I do have to say that in. I do have to say that in, in my experience with sewer operations, we did not TV lines in Lansing every year. That simply would not have been possible, the amount of miles of sewer line that you have, that's just not something that you can accomplish. Our scheduled maintenance was to TV lines once every five years, jet them once a year or year and a half. So I do understand what she's saying, and there is the concept of sovereign immunity with the city or town. I guess I'm also, though, feeling the pain of the homeowner who did absolutely nothing wrong, and also could have done nothing to prevent this situation, and yet has a $23,000 bill to mitigate what happened because our line backed up. I understand also what Council Drappo's saying about somebody else could block our line, and then we are, we're liable.
That's what the insurance-
Through the chair. Through the chair. Can you just give us a rough vicinity of the area we're, we're currently?
Just above where a warrant terrace comes across, a little bit higher up, couple four houses up, probably.
So 40, maybe a 45, 50-year-old system?
Probably. It's depending on when that street was put in, yeah.
I mean, let's face it, a root ball doesn't grow overnight.
But we did exactly what Erica was saying, we routed it last year, and we went back this year, well, we were gonna camera it this year anyway, but we only camera about 20% of the years, like, you can't do them all. Yeah, but Paul, you did your due diligence in that area anyway, so what, getting penalized for doing our due diligence? To some extent, I guess. And if we hadn't done any due diligence at all, not touched that place for 10 years, the insurance company might pay for it? They could've come back too and say, doing negligence, they still wouldn't cover it. That's happened in other towns, they'll cover the first one, but they won't do it probably the second one.
Double-edged sword also in that your premiums go up on your PNC and your liability, so it's not quite as easy as saying, well, if we do nothing, they'll pay.
There are communities who don't do anything, after a while, they'll come in and say, we're not paying anymore, 'cause you're not helping yourself, so.
If I might, I know, you know, I've watched the sewer guys, they do a heck of a job in identifying problems, resolving issues before they become a problem, but you can't catch everything. I think in this particular case, if I'm wrong, you did see some type of a plug, you jetted it out.
They jetted it as just a regular-
As a regular maintenance.
Regular maintenance. Apparently, they just punched a hole through the root ball.
Yeah.
And it flowed till this spring.
And then is the normal procedure after that is to camera it?
As much as we can, but we obviously can't do them all.
So in this particular case, you didn't camera it?
Cameraed that neighborhood.
If you would've cameraed, would you have found?
Absolutely.
A problem?
Which we found in this spring, when we went back.
Is there a procedure in place? And you don't do all of them, what determines whether you camera or not camera?
We're trying to camera about 20%, that's what the insurance company in DEP would like to see us do.
Well, when you do maintenance on, you do 20% maintenance on the sewer lines every year?
We do more than 20%.
More than 20, and not all are cameraed?
No.
In other words, if I might, it is not standard procedure to go back and camera a line after jetting. Cammering outside of our normal five-year cycle would be in response to something that we can't identify, we know there's a problem, but we can't identify the problem, so you run the camera, you try to get a better look at what the problem is. In this case, we jet the line, the line's now running free, you assume there's no further issue, so running a camera after that would not be standard practice. But you, standard practice for preventive maintenance is to try and camera all your lines in a five-year cycle. So 20% per year equals-
Had we not been able to get through the root ball last year, then we would've gone in the camera and see why.
I understand.
When nothing stopped us from getting to the top of the street. I would suggest we pay the bill.
I don't think we have any choice.
If it makes you feel better, I got scolded by MMA when I told the homeowner of the town should pay, but I got scolded, so.
Yes, and today she suggested I have all of our department head levels go to training.
So it looks like the bill right now we're voting on is for the additional 17,000. So I will make a motion that-
Ten.
Oh, it's just a discussion.
It's a discussion, so.
Sorry.
I think it's just a straw vote, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, but the entire project's over 20, but, and there is a time consideration here as well, so.
Well, I would believe that, go ahead, Mike.
Who's the commissioner for, is it still Eric Chopper for the MMA? No?
No, that, I believe, there's different people over different things, they have an elected president who currently is, that changes every year, currently it is Elaine, she's out of Solon, she's the Solon manager, Elaine Allos.
Allos?
Yes.
And who's the commissioner?
There's, not a commissioner, it's a different, they have a executive director, let me look it up.
Is there any way, Erica, you can appeal these decisions?
I did, I appealed it in writing.
I can move that.
And that was the answer, I just got back today.
Okay.
You could decide to vote on it.
By making a motion to add it to the agenda?
This matters can be added to the agenda, it's just a matter of, it's broken, the public have adequate notice and so forth.
That's okay.
Well, are we just doing a straw vote?
Well, hang on, wait there.
There's a question.
Contemplating putting it on the agenda real quick. I mean, it's inevitable, right?
I just don't wanna hold these votes up.
Exactly.
Then they're done, that.
Erica, find out some info.
That's the only reason we brought it up for discussion at this meeting, rather than waiting until the May.
I'll make a motion that we add it to the agenda, or allow, as an order, allowing Erica to pay the bill in full.
I second that.
The council has delegated authority to our town manager to spend up to $20,000 on a particular matter, and the reason, one of the reasons it's been brought up as discussion is because while the amount of the claim is less than 20,000, 17,000, there's actually other damage that was done, that if you put the two together, it's over 20,000.
Right.
So I think, I think that Erica's asking, she's just wants, I think you can view this as an under $20,000 item, and if, and the council is okay with it, then-
Okay, so then that's just a straw vote.
Yeah.
Hey, I always send my motion.
But to the two, the bill, whereas it's a $17,000 bill for renovation, but a $7,000 cleanup, is it considered one project, or?
I know, I know, I, I do it separately, but if you-
I don't wanna do anything to upset anybody.
The easiest way around that would just be to make it, just do it officially.
Let's do it officially.
Renew my motion as an order to allow-
A resolution.
A resolution. To allow the town manager to pay the total bill of 23,000.
Or whatever the amount is.
Or what, to, whatever that amount is on that one project.
I second that motion.
How can we roll on the discussion line?
We just added it to the agenda, Jerry.
It's a resolution.
A resolution. Yeah. Discussion.
Any discussion, any more discussion on this, does anybody believe we should not pay the bill?
I'll do a vote count.
So, Ro Corvo, Del Macklin?
Yes.
Jerry Kurian?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
And Peter Drappo?
Yes.
Motion, passes seven to zero.
That's it.
Now, I'll-
We need to answer Mike's question, huh?
Sorry.
Yeah, okay.
Who's the executive director?
There is no-
They're coming to visit, individually, and sign up.
Okay. So last discussion item, the June 12th council meeting location, I think we've figured this one out. The June 13th election is being held in this room, and we have a meeting that night, so we had to schedule some maneuvering of tables and chairs and election equipment, but Paul's graciously gonna have his guys come in first thing in the morning on the 13th and set this room up, so our council meeting can stay here and be all set. That's it?
Could I answer the question on my other name?
Of course you can.
Sure.
You could at any time.
I was, well, they don't, they have governing boards, so they, the board of directors is all elected town officials, and then there are two members of the public that are appointed to the, to the boards, which, one of them is from Bath Iron Works Risk Management, and the other one is a private citizen. But the executive director, who would be the employee, is Catherine Conlow.
Conlow?
Yes. And she's been the executive director for about a year. She was prior a town manager and had been the president of MMA, I believe, two years ago, because Jim Bennett was the president last year.
Would you all send my question to the door?
So we have no executive session, and we all-
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Johansson? Passes seven to zero at 6:40.